Let's all rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We're gonna start off with Brandon Sanders this morning. How are you, Brandon?
Very good.
What have you got for us today?
I've got an agreement in front of you, Jeff. It's for all the commissioners to sign. It is an agreement with Endot, the city of Richmond, and Wayne County. They are working on replacing five culverts that cross the I-70 interstate. And they will cross underneath Cart Road. And this is work that's being performed between US-27 and US-227. So I think there's two culverts in the county side, and there's three in the city of Richmond. But the agreement is for Endot to enter our right-of-way and replace the culverts, and all at their cost, none to us. So Ron has reviewed it and it's ready for your approval.
This is all, excuse me, all part of the Interstate 70 upgrades. And this will be done preparatory to expansion to three lanes, right?
Correct.
Ron, any questions? I think you had them deleted.
It's poorly worded, but it's Endot. So I told Brandon to save the email exchange, and that way we can clarify what the intent of the parties was, if it ever were to become an issue.
Okay, we need to print those emails out and attach them to this document. So...
Move for approval.
Second. We have motion and a second to approve the joint use and maintenance agreement between Endot, the city of Richmond, and Wayne County for improvements to culverts crossing Interstate 70. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose the same sign. Motion carries. I'll pass this around for signature.
Thank you very much.
Why don't we just go ahead with Mike Sharp while we're working with our friends from Highway? What have you got for us today, Mike?
Couple things, just to get your signature on it. It's gonna be going to council, but I wanted to get your approval before we went to council. This first one is a quest for a new fund or account. So what this would do is create a bytuneus line item from the jail bond. We've got the college corner we're gonna be paving on, and Endot's gonna be reimbursing that. It's forty-some thousand dollars. Can't remember the exact number. But what this would do is, they'll reimburse us, but we won't get that money probably till next year. So instead of taking out of our bytuneus fund for this year, we can basically take it out of the jail bond fund. And then when Endot reimburses, because we have to do the work and then turn in all the paperwork and all that, they'll reimburse us. It'll go back into the jail bond fund money. It's just basically borrowing it from that. So this is just creating a line item for that.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any further discussion? And this just requires the president's signature. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose the same sign. Motion carries.
The next one is a request to transfer. We had quite a few large culvert pipes this year that need to be replaced. And I ran short on money. So this is basically transferring some money to be able to cover that. One of them's just transferring from the unrestricted to the restricted in culverts, I think $2,000. And then there's another one that's $10,000. That's, I think it's coming from the Highway Labor, kind of the truck drivers, foremen, operators. Transferring $10,000 from that into the culvert line item to be able to cover... I thought I had all the pipes ordered, and I ordered two. They're pretty good-sized pipes. I think they're 103 by 71-inch pipes for Fouts Road. They're double pipes, and I ordered two, but for some reason I made a mistake. And we got two pipes in, but we connected them together. I need actually four pipes to connect them together. So I ran short on that money. And we got plenty of money since we've been short on Labor truck driver positions this year. So I thought we could just take it all that and transfer it over.
And you're gonna take this to council tonight?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve recommendation of a $12,000 transfer?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose the same sign. Motion carries.
And the other thing is, it was approved through ARPA to pay for the painting of the buildings out the Highway Department. In doing that, one of the things I forgot, I didn't notice until later, was the generator that we moved from the old jail out to the Highway Department. Kind of sits in the back there. It's never been painted. And then I just kind of happened to see it and look at it, and I was like, oh, we probably should paint that as we're doing the project. So I had Percy Ponco, who got the award for the other bid, to give me a price. $680 would be to sand that down and paint that generator that's out there to kind of flow with the rest of the building. So I wanted to know if that was okay to pay out of the ARPA funds on that part of it, which we kind of discussed a little bit yesterday, that we're gonna be...
Painting has been out of the $300,000 that council and commissioners approved for you. So I don't see that...
It's free.
It's part of the painting.
It has to be scraped. It's kind of ugly.
Right, right.
I think that...
And Percy Ponco came in under...
Yeah, so I think they came in at $29,000 something. I think the next bid was like $50,000 something. And so it was $680. So it put a total of painting all the exterior, the three buildings, plus the generator, $31,720.
Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose the same sign. Motion carries.
And then you'd asked me to talk to, out at Clyde Moberly, we looked at kind of down at the cul-de-sac to be able to extend that right-of-way portion. I think there's three property owners down there. To extend that out is what I was kind of looking at, and Brandon kind of drew it up. He'd asked me to talk to the property owners. I talked to all three property owners. They've all three agreed to let us have that right-of-way at no cost or anything to be able to get that. So I don't know what the next step is from that point.
Can Brandon give us a legal of it?
He's got it drawn up.
Legal description, Brandon?
I can get with Gordon and update the entire description.
Let's do that.
Yeah, and just focus on that area that's gonna involve those three, and I'll do three grants.
Is there something they would have to sign?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if you give me that, then I can get them to...
I need that.
Right, right. Once you get that, though, it may be best if I go out there personally to get them to...
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Sign it rather than just send it to them and...
Check for $10.
Or the snowplows.
They're gonna give it. There's no cost.
Let's have some nominal consideration. Five bucks, okay?
Okay.
We'll work that out. And as soon as we get that done, then let's get everything else scheduled and bring it back for a final decision on the road.
Okay.
And I don't think we've received any further surveys of it.
We have not. And I talked to Gordon about it earlier this week, and he has not received anything from... One of the property owners said that they were gonna have it resuraveled.
Yeah, he's looking at a lawsuit with another property owner disputing that part of it. So I told him this was kind of, you know, we're not going to expand or do anything beyond. I said he needs to get his lawsuit settled beyond that portion of it. But we couldn't ever do anything if this is not done first. So him and his wife has agreed to that.
Okay, great. Thank you for doing that.
Mike, I have a question for you. A citizen asked me about your crews mowing along county roads. Are they still mowing?
Yes. We have not finished round one yet. So we're still on round one. We normally do two mows a year. But I think up in the northeast part of the county has not been moved, or northwest part of the county.
Yeah, this was Jacksonburg Road, between Jacksonburg Road and Road 1 on W. Olers.
I don't think they've been in that area yet. Just, mowing's kind of one of the, we like to do it, but then when you're short help and the paving and projects and so forth, it's the first thing that gets shut off to do the other projects per se. So that's why normally we're typically done with first mowing by now. And so, and then when we go back for the second mow, we normally start around that October area. And then we mow all the way back, or try to mow all the way back after the grass stops growing and so forth, for the winter time and so forth.
Enough for me. I'll let them know.
But yeah, we're running behind on that end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to give that to Brandon?
Yes.
Ron, what have you got for us?
A few things. Now, I think you've authorized, just so that the record's clear, you need a motion authorizing the president to sign the quick claim deed to the city of Richmond for the two properties that we determined to divide in the commissioner's deed sales process.
Okay, now, which two are we talking about? So one of those...
About...
One of those is Sheridan Street.
Sheridan Street and then North 15th.
So Steve, have you heard anything from Gunty? I haven't either, so we may be, we may be a bit premature on that. On the Northwest 15th Street. Remember, we were, we originally talked about giving that to... Guys, could you guys step to the back if you're gonna, if you need to carry on that conversation? Okay, thank you. So Sheridan Street is gonna go to Habitat for Humanity. North 15th was gonna go to the Housing Authority. And they were gonna, they were gonna build on that, but they found that a section of that is in the new floodplain map, so they can't build on it. So they don't want it. We're back now to seeing if Spur wants it.
Oh, okay.
Remember, if we had that whole issue with Spur...
Was there an adjacent property owner or a budding property owner also might be interested?
There is one, and so we're gonna have to follow up with which way that goes. If we, in order to give it to Spur, we would have to go through the city.
Are we okay to proceed then on the deed on Sheridan Street?
Yes, we want to do that.
Okay. Let me see how I've done it. I think I used an exhibit for the legal. Yeah, I did. And we do have, they hang up, and Bobby had given it to me, and I just buried it in my... Was the counterpart resolution that the city of Richmond passed. It included Sheridan Street. It also included North 15th. But to the extent that we don't act on North 15th, the resolution doesn't make any difference. Street, so...
Okay.
And I'll basically recommend that the president be authorized to sign deleting track two from the legal description as per discussion.
Do we have a motion to that?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose the same sign. Motion carries.
I do think I probably need to give you an update in executive session on pending litigation. We've had a, well, there's one suit that's been filed for some time. We're starting to get some discovery requests. Steve and I will be working on that relating to the Health Center Building. The original Health Center Building.
Right.
And then just recently, there's a wrongful death action filed that involves county emergency medication. That has not had council assign. I'll wait for that, and then maybe we'll set up an executive session so you can be aware of what's going on.
Okay.
I think you and I had some email exchange on, I don't know if it's distributed by Indiana Association Counties or whatever, but there's a case pending for transfer to the Indiana Supreme Court. Uh, versus some county. Can't remember which one it was. And the issue that at least they think is going to be, that was decided at the lower courts, is whether elected county officials are per se deemed to be full-time for purposes of employment-related benefits. And the trial court held that they were. The appellate court reversed. Now, Supreme Court's granted transfer vacated the opinion of the appellate court. I don't have any insight as to exactly what they'll decide, but I guess my thought was, I didn't think officials were employees in the first place, whether full-time or otherwise. So that may be what the Supreme Court decides to address, but we'll see. It'll probably be already decided in the next, something like this. Usually it's a three, four, or five-month process. But I didn't see it.
Okay.
I think we've got some issues as to WUR that I've given you. Trust what you need.
Right, and we're working on that.
As noted on the news this morning, the sheriff has determined to kind of sever the historical relationship with the Wayne, let's say it wrong, Drug Task Force, Wayne County Drug Task Force.
County Drug Task Force, right.
Still will continue the county's efforts. And I think the annual appropriation is usually $15,000. I don't know if it's kind of non-reverbing or what. I've talked with him, and the council's asked that I work with the city attorney to try to come up with an agreement to divide the assets, because they do have some, obviously some cash assets as well as other non-cash assets. So I'll keep you posted on that. The other issue we talked about last week was the template for the lease of about 100 by 100 area of land the county owns out by the Highway Department for purposes of erecting a base cell tower. I reviewed that template. The biggest problem I have with that template is that I, and as I'm gonna tell, I tell all my clients when I have any, you know, that have this issue, get some security for decommissioning. There's none in the agreement. Of course, ultimately, with the county, it's always been the city or whatever the municipality is. That's the backup default for taxpayers, but I think we ought to, we ought to ensure security before taxpayers are on the line for it. So that was, that's the only thing I saw. There's a couple of issues that aren't that terribly substantive. I mean, we're not gonna agree to be sued defiance Ohio. You know, we don't have the authority to go outside of jurisdiction.
Okay.
I'll get that. And then Steve has given me a couple of letter assessments of the property, and they're fine. So basically, we get that, we'll be ready to get a finalized template for our site and go from there.
Okay. Any questions?
We're looking roughly $500 a month, which is in the range of, maybe toward the low end, but the range of acceptability. And the way this would work would be to credit against future leases that we have towers that will augment our radiation system in the county that Perry's company's been working with.
Correct. Okay. Questions for Ron?
Perry County. Of course, Perry County.
Okay. Anything else, Ron?
I think there was some question about the two buildings, 22nd and Main. I've given you the process of going forward. It moves fairly quickly when it becomes possible.
Okay, and we've, I've got a meeting next week, I think, on that at the city's request. So we'll keep that, keep that moving if we have that opportunity.
And I am working on the template for blight elimination. There's a little more nuances to that interlocal, so I want you to take a good look at it. I'll probably have it done by the end of the day. I've done, I think, all of the county-funded green street revitalization templates.
Okay.
Send the, you know, and the need restrictions. And then I had given a base template for the school engagement program, student engagement program. I didn't know where that, if we needed to flesh in the rest, or Beth could do that. I mean, obviously, you can change signature templates and all that.
Right. We're working through that, so I'll keep you posted on where we're at. Thank you.
And then the only other one was the potential RFP for subsidized market rate housing. And I'd wait to hear from you guys, from you on that one to go.
Right, okay. Since we're in pretty good shape. Steve, any, anything on the blight? We're moving forward with that?
Yeah, we, for ours, we've received both the asbestos inspection reports and being quotes for those. One of them did not have asbestos, the other did. So we'll need a quote for renewal, which I understand will be addressed by the program itself.
Right. Okay, okay.
Should that be delineated as an expense that, you know, would have to absorb as part of their expenses?
It'll, it'll, I think...
Would just be part of the grant funding?
Come out of the grant.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did he request an executive session on some of those?
He didn't give us a date, so do you want us to go ahead and set an executive session?
No, I want to wait for legal council to sign for this recently filed one. It's wrongful death.
Okay, so in the next couple of weeks, probably. Okay. Valerie, good morning.
Hey.
Thanks for coming to see us.
Thanks for squeezing me in. I mean, hi.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. So the EDC board met last Monday, September the 9th, and we reviewed several things, one of which, I'll start with our budget on page 14, so you can see where we are a year to date. We're under budget by $63,538 for the year, and we were under budget $9,784 on the month. So we're still tracking really well within our 2024 budget. The main item that I wanted to present to you today is an edit grant application number 24-210 from Transcendia. That starts on page two. Transcendia is in the process of investing roughly $17 million here in Richmond. They have a warehouse across the street from their primary manufacturing plant, and they've actually moved a manufacturing line into that, which required significant upgrades to electricals and other systems to accommodate it. They had to add break rooms and restrooms for more team members over there. And that move has made way for a new $10.5 million piece of equipment coming, I believe, from Austria. I think that's right. But anyhow, that's a state-of-the-art piece of equipment that will allow them to move into food and beverage and healthcare production films. So an example that the plant manager gave is, think about syringes. When you open a syringe, that plastic film on the syringe, they will have the capability to make that kind of plastic. So all in all, $17 million. They create, plan to create 30 new jobs at an average hourly wage of $23.50 per hour. They're already going to add 10 jobs yet this year, and the remainder of the 20 will be added in 2025. And the project should be completed in mid-2025. So with that, we are requesting an edit grant in the amount of $95,000 to support the project. In addition to that, we did help them facilitate a tax abatement application to the city of Richmond for both real and personal property, real property updates to both facilities as well.
Awesome. Questions? Do we have a motion of approval for the edit grant?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the edit grant, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Non-union jobs, right?
That's correct.
The $20 threshold is still in place, and that doesn't seem to be a problem with these new edit grant requests, does it?
No, and actually, we're reevaluating the wage threshold again, just to make sure it's in the appropriate place. We want to make sure we're always encouraging higher-paying jobs for the community. I also wanted to share with you, in this packet, starting on page 20, you'll find the EDC's 2023 audit that was completed. There were no findings from Bradyware. Always happy to report that, but you can review that at your leisure. And I did just want to share a brief ready update. That's been a topic of conversation in my world lately. I've spent several hours up in Muncie over the last week, meeting with the regional partners, evaluating projects, looking at how they scored, trying to find what we believe is an equitable way to divide up the funding to support, you know, very impactful projects for the region. And we do have a final project list that we have voted on to move forward to the IEDC. I can't share with anyone what those projects are yet until the IEDC has approved those projects. But overall, for funding consideration, Wayne County had six traditional ready funding projects. We had one, a blight project, and then we have four arts and culture projects submitted. So hoping to know about the ready projects and the blight projects at the same time from IEDC. Once that is sorted, then we will shift to the arts and culture projects. But we will likely have to go through a planning process for the region before we're able to actually submit our projects for the Lilly funding consideration.
So the IEDC has veto power over your recommendations?
They do, yeah.
Okay.
So they could eliminate a project. They could ask to see a replacement project. They could reduce the allocation that we're requesting. They do have full authority.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we don't want to reveal any of the projects, because we don't want to get anyone's hopes up. Or anyone who isn't getting a project submitted, it could be premature to tell them that they're not getting any funding.
Okay.
It will be interesting.
Fifty-six projects, I think, that we scored. That was an interesting process.
Yes. So I will let you know as soon as I hear anything back from the IEDC. I'm hoping it will be yet this month that we'll hear something.
Okay.
And then the last thing I wanted to share is I have been out at town council meetings. I have a couple upcoming that I'm going to. I just got Milton confirmed for October 8th. I will be going to Economy on October 9th. And I'm in the process of reaching out to Dublin regarding their October 8th meeting. But so far, conversations have been very positive. Of course, Wayne County's unit contribution agreement is approved. Cambridge City has approved theirs, as has Centerville. Richmond, it has been sent to the Finance Committee, and I've not heard yet what the status of that is. I need to follow back up. And East Germantown I was at last week, and they had previously voted to participate. They didn't realize it was for four years, so they're now taking that four-year commitment under consideration. So that's where those currently stand.
All right. Questions for Val?
There should be a kind of a honeymoon period with some of these small towns, because we were quite generous with our opioid settlement funds with public safety requests. Thirty percent of the opioid funds can be spent in an unrestricted manner. And so under Brad's leadership, he contacted all of the public safety departments and town marshals in the smallest municipalities. And every municipality that wished to receive opioid settlement funds did. Those that are currently in the economic development fold, and even those that are not. So there has been extraordinary gratitude expressed, because over $200,000 was distributed to all the towns that wished to receive within... So that honeymoon period will wear off after a while, but right now, there should be a feeling of warmth, not only from ARPA and Help and all those that participated in that, but also this more recent distribution of cash for basically whatever they wanted.
Good, good. It's been a great time to be able to assist the... Good. Good. It's been a great time to be able to assist the small towns with the unique funding that the counties had available.
I mean, there were worthy needs, uh, to upgrade their public safety needs in the small towns, but it's only fair that you know that we prioritized, uh, towns throughout the county in our distribution.
Great. Happy to hear that.
So to carry the collaboration theme a little bit further, as you know, we, we all agreed to, uh, work with the small towns and, and apply for, uh, for regional stellar. And, uh, we did that. We were not selected as a finalist, but, uh, in the process, we have continued the conversation, particularly with the Wayne County Foundation, about going ahead with a planning process, uh, since the, the HELP, uh, projects are pretty well underway moving forward. Uh, it, it seems to me to be a good idea to, uh, to engage in the next planning process, so that we have a new list of projects and ideas to, uh, to float and to qualify, uh, conversations in the communities. And the Foundation is, is willing to participate. We're pulling together, uh, a group, hopefully, of, of partners, uh, to help pay for, for that, uh, planning process, so we'll be talking more about that in the coming weeks. But, uh, uh, if things go well, uh, we hope to launch that at the first of the year, so. Those conversations, and of course, the EDC would be a valuable partner in, uh, in that kind of process, as you have been through, through all the others. So, thank you for what you've been doing and what you will continue to do in the future.
Thank you. I, uh, it's been great. Like you said, the collaboration that's happened, and it's been a good opportunity to get to know, um, the other communities more in-depth in terms of what their needs are and, and how we can assist. And, uh, we're just in constant planning mode.
It seems like, but the difference, I think, the difference, I think, is we also, for a few years now, and, and going into the future, have been in constant activity mode. So, you know, as opposed to creating a plan and putting it on the shelf, we're actually implementing these plans. And, uh, I think we need to keep the momentum building, um, working with the small towns. They have been very, as Mary Ann alluded, very appreciative, uh, of what we're doing and, uh, including them in the planning process, so I want to keep that going. You're involved, the EDC is involved, working with, uh, Earlham, as I understand it, on, on their Lilly grant and how that, uh, how that happens. Anything you can share with us on, on that? Or I know, I know a lot of that is still kind of, um, not ready for, for public, uh, presentation, but any developments and do you know where, what's going on with, uh, Elder Beerman Building as part of? It's not part of that, but it's related because it's used for the match.
Sure. So regarding the Revitalized Richmond, um, Earlham's Lilly Grant, uh, the EDC has been, uh, leading negotiations with a developer who has four large historic buildings under contract in downtown Richmond, and the intent is to fully revitalize those, those buildings. And so we have been working out the details of the economic development agreements. The EDC will have to enter into a subawards agreement with Earlham. It'll be a pass-through for a portion of their funds that will go to the private developer for the revitalization of those buildings. And, and so the EDC has an agreement with Earlham, and then the EDC will have an agreement with the developer as to how those funds can be used, what the project scope is, what the developer's investing. And then further, the city and the developer will have a separate agreement outlining any additional, uh, monetary incentives that the city is considering at this point. Um, we are still waiting for the pro forma, uh, from the company, uh, to be able to really analyze the project and what the gap is before we commit the funds. However, those conversations are moving forward. Um, we're, we're talking regularly and trying to get this, the project scope finalized, so we can finalize all of those agreements. But it's an exciting time for downtown Richmond, because this is coming on the heels of the former Elder Beerman, uh, building, uh, which the demolition contract has been awarded. So we should see activity starting there very soon. The, we've been working with the developer for that project, who, um, we're hoping to close on, uh, all the financing in January. And so the intent is for the city to have the building down, to have all the site work under contract and going before we close on the project, hopefully in January.
County going to have an opportunity to review the financial, uh, development agreement?
Yes, that is still in the works.
Anything else for Val?
You beat me to it.
All right. Thank you very much, Val.
Thanks, Val.
Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, next is Matthew Kane. Welcome, Matthew.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry, I have to leave early.
I know, you're fine. I'm racing around to get up here in time.
Did we miss anything that we should know?
Nothing earth-shaking now. Uh, come before you this morning just simply, um, as trying to think ahead and stay ahead. Um, there's been a lot of talk, uh, throughout the state, of course, with our dry conditions, uh, and drought conditions of the possibility, uh, of burn bans being talked about, uh, by all the different counties. As of this morning, I believe there's like thirty-nine of the counties in the state have gone to the official, uh, burn ban. So we haven't had to do this very much, uh, in Wayne County. I simply wanted to kind of remind you of what that process looks like and the vehicle in which we're able to do that, um, and, uh, what that might look like should the fire chiefs come to me and request it. It is, um, a state statute, um, that it is up to the jurisdictional fire chief to make those decisions. Um, and so in all reality, a particular entity or jurisdiction could en- enforce or, uh, implement their own burn ban by township, by city. But that traditionally is not done, because it creates a lot of confusion for everybody. Uh, and so it's traditionally done as an entire county. The fire chiefs, uh, make that formal request to the emergency management office, and then that has to go before commissioners. The, the vehicle that we use in order to do the burn ban is in a, is a disaster declaration by the county. Uh, it involves quite a bit of paperwork on my end, um, to do that, but it's, uh, it, it's, it can be done and has been done. Uh, the last time we did this was, uh, September of two thousand twenty, and prior to that, I believe it was two thousand twelve. So it, it's not done very often, uh, and simply kind of wanted to remind you of what, uh, it would look like. It does require, uh, the signature of, uh, all three commissioners in order to do that. And, uh, it, we can do it over the phone and get signatures later, similar to how we do snow level emergencies, uh, in the wintertime. Just kind of wanted you to be prepared, uh, that if you get a phone call from me, uh, and the reason we're not just going ahead and doing it this morning is that as of this meeting, and as I stand before you, not a single, single fire chief has come to me to request this yet. Um, also, based on my, uh, polling statistics from, uh, the dispatch center, we've only had four, four, uh, field fires, uh, or grass fires, uh, in the last two weeks. So we're doing okay, uh, comparatively speaking, to some other counties that, uh, I know are seeing them more frequently. Uh, but I also am not immune to the fact that I know it's dry and it may just be a matter of time. Uh, so the Fire Chiefs Association meeting is tonight, uh, at seven o'clock in Boston, and I already know that this is going to be an agenda item, uh, for that. And so, uh, I just wanted to simply prepare you, uh, that I may be, uh, having a phone conversation with you in the coming days, because that's been a formal request to our office.
Matthew, apparently six ninety-six already knew this was going to be on the agenda day, because they had a news alert.
Oh, really?
Reporting that the commissioners were going to be discussing it, and I was like, well, that's news to me, so. Because all the counties, I think, around us have already hit a burn ban.
Randolph, Randolph has?
Just last night.
Last night, okay.
Yeah. What is the procedure of reversing the burn ban? Is it just, uh, the same process?
Correct, uh, pretty much. Uh, it's just, uh, at whatever level of comfortable, I guess it is, if we've received, uh, precipitation enough to feels like that that threat has gone down. Uh, we're already starting to field a lot of questions, uh, from different entities that had planned bonfires this weekend. So that's why, uh, burn ban seems simple, um, but in fact, it actually creates a lot of problems. It comes, uh, there's an enforcement issue, there's a question issue. It fields a lot of phone calls to both dispatch and the emergency management office. What can I do? What can't I do? We, in the document that I provided you, is just simply that draft version of what it might look like, because I just wanted you to know how it addresses each of those. It specifically goes down a list of what is permitted and what isn't permitted. And so those, that, that is what we go off of when, when individuals call and ask.
Who's the, is it the fire chiefs does the enforcement of this, or, or is it law enforcement?
Have to fall to law enforcement, because there is a fine involved. Uh, spoke with Sheriff Redder just a little bit, uh, this morning about that and what it would look like, and that's why it has to be under kind of this disaster declaration in order to give him any type of enforcement.
And unfortunately, it's fall, and people tend to want to have more fires, even just that.
Sure.
So it's, I, I feel your pain on this, all right? Uh, I, I noticed, does the statute require a, a ban be reviewed every seven days?
Correct.
Now, is the process for extending after a, that's seven-day renewal a, any more streamlined than having to go through the whole thing over?
No, not necessarily. It would just be, I think, as simply as me checking with the fire chiefs, uh, group discussion of what everybody's thoughts are, feelings are, whether we need to extend it. Yes, then I would come back each week at your commissioner meeting and ask to extend it, uh, another seven.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Number one, we, I have not yet decided if we're going to be meeting every week in the next few weeks. And so that, this may play into whether or not we meet, because next week is the Association of Indian Counties.
Okay.
After that, not everyone's going to be present, so, uh, we would have to be present. This isn't like a snow emergency. Do we have to be present to take a vote to, and, okay, this is like a snow.
It is like a snow emergency. Which is why I'm standing before you this morning, just to prep you for that, that I may be calling you.
And so if they request tonight, at their meeting, that, that we impose this, we would do it tomorrow.
I would start the process in the morning. Yeah. It's a, it's a time-consuming process and getting paperwork all lined up and submitted to the state, but it can absolutely be done. We would start that first thing in the morning.
You know, just like a Level Three hurts some people a whole lot more than another. Burn ban hurts some more than others. And so I'm thinking of the businesses that might be harmed, like campgrounds. I mean, I'm guessing campgrounds have a lot of open fires, right? So that could hurt their business. Maybe people don't camp here. They go to a county that doesn't have a burn ban instead of camping here. Any other businesses that might be harmed as we move toward a burn ban?
Not when you look at this list of what is and isn't permitted.
Yeah.
And the reasons for those. So, uh, no, it's mainly open burning and that kind of thing. I can't think any businesses that would be doing open burning, because they fall under certain restrictions by IDIM to do that on a good day, so.
Now, the definition of open burning. I have some friends who have spent more than I can imagine necessary on pits, fire pits. I mean, architecturally-built, stone, elaborate, uh, burn pits in their backyards. They are not what I would call open pits. I mean, they are stone and they're built and they've got, you know, all kinds of stuff. What is open burning? Does it include, like, some of these elaborate fire pits that are, that are a part of just so many homes today?
In that document, that document that you have in front of you there on the second page, it specifically lists campfires, any type of recreational fire, ceremonial fires, uh, burning wood, combustible matter, uh, with the exception of grills, charcoal or propane, timber, vegetation.
So however elaborate a wood fire might be, if it's burning wood in an open manner, then it would be banned.
I'm not an attorney, but I, I would think so, yes, uh, unless, uh, going on these guidelines, which is what we've used in the past and is kind of what the state, uh, has sent down as suggested.
I would think, Mary Ann, the recreational part of it would qualify that. I mean, if you're heating your house with wood, that's different, but if you're out, no matter how elaborate it is, it's a recreational fire. You're not cooking.
I'm sure you've seen some of these. I mean, I can't believe what people have spent.
We have a fire pit, so, yeah.
I mean, and they're safe. I mean, there, there's no, because the thing next to them is the pool and the jacuzzi, and, you know, there's, it's not a fire that's going to get out of control, but they would be banned as well. So we do not take a burn ban lightly.
Correct.
Right.
All right. Any other questions?
We'll be in touch, and then we'll let you know.
Thank you for staying on top.
Just clarification, you could put that ban in effect prior to the documents having been forwarded to the Homeland Security Office, or whoever, whoever you send them to the state.
Well, yes. Um, and what we do is I go ahead and send, uh, very similar to the, the copy you have in front of you, just saying that the signature will be on file, uh, should it be needed. But I, I do have to go ahead and send the actual documents to Department of Homeland Security when that goes into effect.
When it goes into effect. My point being is that there's no seven-day advance notice requirement or anything like that.
No, sir.
And you don't have to have our signatures physically on a document to send it forward? You can just say signatures on file.
Just like the snow emergency.
Just like Level Three, okay.
But we also could, could take a vote to approve it when requested by the Fire Association.
Correct.
I, I'll make that motion that we approve the ban burn subject to the approval or the right request from the.
Recommendation from the Fire Chiefs Association.
And approval of the EMA director.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Does that work for you, Matthew?
It does, sir.
All right. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
So you won't have to track us down. Sally Ford.
So let us know.
I'll still keep you informed.
We'll wait to hear for it on six nine six.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Or any other radio station.
For man, just keep by your skin.
Thanks a lot.
I should probably tell you, I stood, I stayed behind at the Ops Board meeting to give the information that I picked up, um, uh, at the National Association of Counties meeting in Seattle last week, um, and from Dan Burke, who kindly, uh, has provided all the information that I think could be helpful, especially from volunteer fire departments. And that is that they too are eligible for free Narcan. The great news that has just emerged in the last few days is that overdose deaths from opioids, including fentanyl, are dramatically down in the last year. And the main reason attributed to that is the massed distribution of Narcan. And while we have done excellent distribution in the city of Richmond, we have not had really good free distribution of Narcan out of the county. So at Ops Board, I told them that, uh, Matthew has agreed to send out the, um, contact information from the Indian Department of Health on how, uh, local municipalities can obtain Narcan. And, uh, this is certainly an approved, should they have any expense in distributing it, like at one of their fundraisers, if they want to promote a fundraiser that distributes Narcan, they could, uh, spend their, uh, restricted, uh, opioid settlement funds in promoting that event. And, um, also to purchase, uh, uh, fentanyl strip detectors, detection strips that are not free, but that would be an appropriate way to spend, even the small towns that have a few hundred dollars. So I stayed behind to let them know that, uh, and you had already departed. So, uh, that would be an excellent way to, uh, continue to reduce the risk of, uh, opioid fatalities.
Dan, good segue.
Good segue.
Come on up.
Thank you for all that information. I passed it on immediately. It's great.
We'll approve this.
Okay. Dr. Ryder's still planning to be here.
As far as I know.
I am here to propose an amendment to our fee ordinance. Most of you are aware through other meetings that the Health Department is requesting to test private well water for citizens of Wayne County. The main reason for this is there's not too many private entities that test well water for residents, and it's a requirement of a lot of real estate transactions. Not only during real estate transactions, but sometimes it's requested by physicians if there's some issues going on there. So we're asking to test the well water. And in doing that, we would charge a $25 administration fee that would be paid to the Health Department. All lab fees would be paid directly to the lab itself, which is HML Lab out of Monty, Indiana. So our intentions are to retrieve several bottles from HML Lab and alongside at the Health Department. And then once or twice a week, we'd have a schedule. If citizens call in, request testing, we'd schedule that testing, go out to the private residents, take the sample, drive it directly to the lab. And that's what that $25 would cover is our services essentially.
And so this is in no way mandating, requiring that private citizens have their water tested. It's facilitation, because right now there's nobody in Wayne County that does the water testing as a third party, an independent organization collecting the water. So if you, if you send in your own water, it's subject as to where it came from. You know, is this, is this out of your own kitchen faucet? Or did you, you know, get it from a house that's connected to municipal water somewhere? So, so that's the idea behind it. It's a service and the nominal fee of $25 is probably.
That fee is.
Well, they have to pay the lab fee.
Yeah.
To the lab itself, not to us.
Paying you to take the sample and deliver it to the, to the testing.
And that $25 would be a fraction of what a private testing company would charge for the conducting of the test.
And if a citizen takes the sample themselves, just out of curiosity, it's $35 for the test and $10 for a courier fee. So they're paying $45. So essentially this would increase their cost by $15, but it would, it would meet the requirements of most financial agencies as a third party taking that sample. And no way, shape or form is it regulatory. We're not, we're not out there testing for regulations. And if we do have a sample that comes back positive for E coli or coliform, we would merely educate. There'd be no, no sanctions or regulatory actions taken. We just educate the homeowner on how to correct the issue.
And clarify, I just did, but this is water quality. The standard conditions put in a lot of purchase agreements for in rural areas sometimes is to have a test for water well capacity. That's, that's not involved, at all involved in this.
This is only testing for bacteria, nitrates and metals.
Bacteria, but what if it is a multifamily housing unit where the landlord is having the water tested in a commercial structure and it comes back tainted?
If it's.
The Health Department have some responsibility to make sure that well is.
We would send recommendations, most definitely, but we don't have an ordinance in place to enforce anything like that.
You're, you're not getting the, the test results.
The results go directly to the property owner.
No, they come, they come to us.
Well, you are getting the results.
Because that's what's required by a lot of realist, not real estate companies, but financial institutions. On that form, it has to state, the Wayne County Health Department took that sample. In order to do that, that sample has, the results have to come to us.
And you're going to turn them to?
To the private citizen, correct.
Granted, this wouldn't be a municipal, probably. I mean, let's hope this isn't municipal water that's being tested.
We will not test public water supply.
Okay, so, so these would be small units, but there's possibility that a landlord would say have a, a four unit apartment building that he just was curious, you know, how is this water has been smelling funny lately? I think I'll test my apartment building.
In a situation like that, if it's supplied by a single well, that supply is all.
Which could be on a four unit building.
It could. We'd take the water sample from the inlet from the well into the bladder tank or something like that. So we were actually getting a sample from that well and not each individual apartment. And there's, there's steps that you have to take in testing water as far as removing the aerator, sanitizing, purging the pipes, you know, a bunch of different things. If that come back with positive for E coli or something, we'd send the results to the landlord. We tell him, this is what you need to do to correct the issue. Let us know in 30 days what you've done to do this. Then at that point, if he comes back and says, well, I'm not fixing it, then we may have to take steps if the residents are sick, going to the doctor, making complaints. But we only write orders on complaint driven inspections. We don't create inspections. We only, we only respond to complaints. So.
Would there be anything stopping you from informing his tenants of this tainted water?
No, there'd be nothing to stop us from doing that.
That might generate a complaint.
Could, you know, we're not trying to drive complaints.
Okay.
You have no intention of doing that?
I, no, I do not.
But the chances are.
There's a chance. There's always a probability for that. But most of what we deal with are the questions that we're getting from the public are from citizens that are refinancing, buying homes, things of that nature. That is, that's what's driven me to ask for this. Not concern citizens for their well water or landlords or anything of that nature.
The last time I'm aware that the Wayne County Health Department did this was in the flood of 2008, primarily in the western part of the county. And there was a lot of wells that tested positive for E coli after the flood. Now, whether or not those wells have all been properly tended to, I don't know, but they're, you know, it was a great service. And so the chances of E coli being detected again are quite possible.
We have our hotspots in Wayne County, obviously. And on our website, anybody can get on there and find out how to chlorinate their well and UV lighting. You know, there's several processes to sanitize a well, so.
Thank you. Well, I, as I understand it, Ron, if we were to pass this amendment to the ordinance unanimously today, this could take effect immediately because if interest rates are dropped today by the Fed, there could be a lot of demand.
Kind of scare me because we need, we need to, I need to get the staff, the procedure written. I mean, I have it written, but.
You're not going to have that much of an influx. Because it's, it's typically, your conventional loans don't require well testing. It's going to be government, VA and FHA.
Once, if you, if the commissioners approve this, it's going to take me at least two weeks to get it up and running in a sense.
But if we don't do it, it might be, you know, why waste time? I guess is my, this is a wonderful service. It's going to save those VA and FHA people who are trying to scrape down every dollar they can to get a down payment. So.
So is that a motion to approve this?
I move that we approve this amendment to the ordinance 2022 006.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to, to make these changes to, to the ordinance. Any further discussion?
Just clarification, your jurisdiction is limited strictly to Wayne County. So if I live in Union County and I'm getting a VA loan to a Richmond lender, you guys aren't going to be available.
We will, we will not cross the county line.
Wayne County water only.
I would have a conversation with Union County's Health Department to encourage them to start their own program, but we won't, we won't do it.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Good thinking, Dan.
Thank you.
Great. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Let's.
Those VA lenders. There's going to be a demand.
Two or three copies signed here. Start those. Dr. Ryder, if we're ready for you.
Good morning. Thanks for coming in.
I'm pleased to report that the Board of Health has a recommended nomination for the county health officer for you, and that is Dr. Jennifer Bales. She's a room doctor at Reed, has been in the community for some time, resides in Richmond, and has had a long record of leadership at Reed and also has been active in community activities pertaining usually to infants, mothers and. I'm pleased to place her name forward for appointment.
That's a unanimous recommendation of your board from yesterday's meeting?
And you had two candidates. Is that correct? That's the only two that you had?
Yes. Well, we, we had four, one withdrew and one didn't complete the process.
Oh, we're fortunate to have her willing to consider this public service. You know, her background experience and her devotion to public health has already been demonstrated. And her service during COVID too was quite extraordinary, as I understand it. So I would like to move that we accept the Board of Health's recommendation for Dr. Bales to be the new public health officer immediately. And then there's. When Dr. Jett Moore's resignation date is what, upon his resignation?
He, he submitted his resignation about three months ago. And, but said until we had a successor in place, he would continue to function as health officer. So I'm assuming that, that that means is that when she's officially in place and resigned, but we'll clarify that point.
I'll change immediately to earliest possible opportunity to make the transition.
That was my question is that, do we absolutely have to make a decision today? Because if we have a health officer that's still doing it, my personal opinion, I'd like to take at least a week. We're here all here next, well, no, we won't.
No, we're not. No, it could be three weeks.
I would like to point out that it is rather urgent because at this point, we don't have anybody who can sign treatment prescriptions for venereal disease or TB treatment.
Dr. Jett Moore can't do that?
He's, he's decided apparently not to do that. He's still signing death certificates.
So, so there is emergency to it. So because of that situation, I'll second Mary Ann's motion and.
All right. We have a motion in a second to approve Dr. Bales as the, the new, the new health officer for Wayne County. I would just like to say that I reviewed her resume. I don't know her personally, but her resume is, is very impressive. I know you've talked to her extensively and know her well. And I, I'm convinced that she'll be a good addition to the Health Department. So looking forward to working with her. Any other comments? If not, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Dan, we've got some signed copies here for you. If you, we need to get the auditor's signature, but there's three copies signed by the commissioners. Thank you all. All right. Mr. Higginbotham, that's your cue.
Okay. And a generator and the mounting pad that was not originally put in according to specs has been removed and replaced and is now compliant with the specifications as drawn up by DLC. So we're now scheduling to actually install the generator. Chamber of Technology, everything that we have ordered, our original scope is now in and functioning. So at this point, I think this project will, since the original scope has completed, we still need to probably adjust some things, but that will be done internally with the IT department. So that project will be completed. Courthouse elevator study. LWC representative will be here this evening to talk to both you and council as to what their findings and suggestions will be. So they'll be on the agenda this evening for that. Coleman roof and the Coleman Center ceiling and lighting project, you did take bids last week. And before you, you have the bid tabs of that, the ones that were received. So if you want to look at that, looking at the upper right hand corner, it should tell you which project you're looking at. So looking at the first one, Coleman Roof Project, had six bids, which was, I thought, really pretty good. And the low bid was Roof Links, and they are out of Charleston, Indiana, Charlestown, Indiana. Their bid was $75,000. And they are also a registered and certified installer of the type of roof that we expect on this. LWC has interviewed them and vetted them to make sure that they did meet the criteria of all the bid specifications they do. So it is their recommendation to accept the Roof Links bid of $75,000 for Coleman Center Roof. And I would, let's go on to the ceiling one, and that is indicated by the upper right hand corner, the ceiling renovation. We received four bids on that. And again, just as the first one, LWC has interviewed the low bidder to make sure that they've met all the specifications of the bid documents. And the low bid for that one is Weason Hut Construction for $97,500. Based upon their recommendation, I also concur with that to accept both these bids, subject to the funding discussion with council this evening. Now, keep in mind, looking back at your, your project sheet, remember we originally had $165,000 set aside for the Coleman Roof, and you had $78,440 left over that didn't get spent for the horse barn roof. So that makes a total of $243,440. Both of these projects together are $172,500. But I would also suggest that we add a 10% contingency into that of $17,250, making the total for both of those projects, $189,750. But I would suggest to council that the 10% contingency be taken out at one time account, so that it does not tie up the ARPA funds. What's your thoughts on that?
I do have some concern as you and I have talked as we get closer and closer to the, to the deadline of December 31st of this year, committing funds, in that if we commit a bunch of contingency funds out of ARPA, and then we don't spend them, we, we have lost our opportunity to use those ARPA dollars.
Oh, I can spend them if they help me.
No, I'm saying, if we have a contract, that they don't have to be done until June of next year. June of next year is too late to recommit those funds.
Contractors indicating that they're substantially pleased, date is October 31st. I don't anticipate a big issue with that, although the other contractors indicated the end of the year. That's why I'm suggesting that the contingency be taken out of another fund.
And I think, how much are you talking about? $17,000?
Seventeen, two.
I think we ought to take that out of the Fairgrounds Fund. I mean, we're, we're taking the lion's share of this out of ARPA and not out of the Fairgrounds Fund.
Temporarily.
If, if we decide to, or if we have contingency, that makes more logical sense to me than taking it out of the general fund.
Okay.
Stephen Tippett. We're talking about a project contingency, not a contractual contingency. In this instance, is that the way it's going to be to?
Yes.
I mean, obviously you prefer that, but if there'd be a reason, we needed to have it in the contract.
It would not be in the contract.
Yeah, they don't care what fund we pay them from.
This would just be money that we had.
Well, my, my point is in general, best practices is if you're going to have a contingency for renovation, to put it in the project budget, because that way you plan for it, but don't put it in the contract, because contractors have a use it or lose it mentality.
Right, exactly.
Right.
So this would be a change order kind of thing would come up that.
Right.
Ran into something we hadn't anticipated.
Gold tiles on the ceiling and it costs $10,000 more or whatever.
How likely is this contingency to be implemented? I mean, this is going to be done immediately? Then so no inflation, no, I don't know.
I don't anticipate any on the roof. If we can get these both done by, before the end of the year, that, that's obviously ideal.
It's so rapidly completed that the odds of contingency coming to play are not.
It's always a good, good idea to have one.
When you're renovating.
Well, yeah, you have to have a contingency. Weather is a issue.
Are are we prepared to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve these.
Make the contract awards to the lowest bidders.
Yeah.
And that would be WCI.
Wees and Hunt and Roof Links.
And Roof Links for the roof.
With a ten percent contingency coming from the Fairgrounds, I'll make that motion.
Great second.
And you're talking about the name, right?
Yeah, correct.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
I'll present that to council tonight.
Good.
And again, the only thing remaining on the first bank expo hall HVAC is the painting of the outside. And that's the subcontractor on that's Percy Ponca, who was out at the highway department painting the building out there. So I've been advised after they're finished out there, they'll come back and finish this.
We have no jeopardy of rain, so.
Well, this this weekend, maybe.
And then we've added a new project to this, the IT capeling project. Remember that you agreed to send RFPs out. Bobby has advertised or going to advertise those and those RFPs will will be due October sixteenth.
And in addition to the advertisement, we're going to mail them to some of our known.
I told Craig that if he has vendors that he has interest in, we should reach out to them individually.
Okay, good.
And then the Fleet Committee, the Fleet Management Committee is recommending to commissioners that we that we dispose of a Carner Fleet, the two thousand six Chevy Uplander. This is one that has been used by the coroner's office for a number of years. They have no more use for it. It's not being used. To it's only been had about four hundred miles put on in the last year. And the new coroner has indicated that this is not a vehicle that he needs. The parts don't fit in it. It's a small one. So the recommendation is is to dispose of the two thousand six Chevy Uplander through the online auction.
This is the one that's rested out? Or is that one already gone?
That one's already gone.
Okay. This is another one that's eighteen years old.
I'll make a motion that we approve selling that vehicle on the auction, live online auction.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Speaking of the auction, have you spoken with the health department before one of the individuals who has since been terminated left? He purchased a instrument that has no use by the health department for twenty eight thousand dollars that the vendor claims is non-returnable, non-refundable. And so I told Dan Burke that you've had great success of selling things online. I just wanted to give you a heads up that I suggested if his appeal to the vendor is unsuccessful, that perhaps that brand new, never used twenty eight thousand dollar medical instrument be offered online at sale because it would have use by a clinic or hospital, but he has no intentions of opening up a health clinic. I just wanted to give you a heads up.
And we may we may want to bring Ron into the loop to check the on the return policy or lack thereof and what recourse we might have to to return it.
We knew we could come out even on a new instrument like that.
What else have you got, Steve?
And then remember last year, the the Kiwanis, they have an event at the Fairgrounds that remember we had this discussion where they.
It's the big bend.
In their case, what I said, the proceeds goes to Riley Children's Hospitals. So I'm suggesting in order to be consistent, that we treat them like we did the square body group. And that is so for two thousand twenty four, there would be a fifty percent reduction in the fee. Twenty five, there'd be a thirty six and then in year twenty twenty six, they then be up to the schedule of the twenty five percent reduction for the nonprofit.
Okay.
Recommendation that we do that for the Kiwanis.
I move for approval. It seems consistent. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
And along with the Fairgrounds, we landed a new new event. This is similar to the travel trailer event where they have picked sites and they rotate. So we won't get this every year, but it is a new event for us. It's the UKC All Breeds Sports Classic. And it is February twenty eighth through the second of March. And this is the ones where these dogs jump in the water and retrieve stuff.
In February, so they set up a they set up a swimming pool in one of the buildings?
Dogs to jump into. So this is a new new event and it should draw some some people.
There will be terriers.
Tucker will be in it. He loves to dock dive.
Yeah.
Steve, you're a expert on all things dog. So what's the difference between UKC and AKC?
The American Kennel Club and the United Kennel, United States Kennel Club.
It's not USKC then?
No, it's UKC.
UKC is United States Kennel Club.
The one at the other one, I have ideas, but.
The UKC, God love them, has allowed the submission of some breeds that the AKC is a little bit more snooty about.
So they don't think they're actually breeds.
I find the AKC too snooty for my breeding.
Okay.
Remember some time ago that we began a discussion about marking our county vehicles? And I think at the time you had concurred to go with this one. This was the this would be the size of it. It would be fourteen inches in diameter, but it would be this color configuration. And the marking of each department, for example, building and ground would go down here. Accessor would go down there depending upon. So we would have about, I've I've sent this out to to all the departments that have vehicles except with the exception of the highway department, the sheriff's department would be exempted from this because they have their own marking. But all the other departments have been notified of this. The Public Defender and the Prosecutor's Office has asked for an exception to this, and I concur with that, just to the nature of the work.
Undercover cop, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, they don't want to be pulling up to.
It's kind of like. And then, yeah, and then the EMA nine one one has asked, does this prohibit them from adding other decals to their car? Are they are they locked into solely this one? I don't think it does.
I think we'd want to see it.
Yeah, I think that's a case by case.
But but this would be the minimum.
Smiley face on the back.
This would be the minimum marking.
And and I guess I had thought we would not replace the current highway markings. But maybe as we get new vehicles that we would replace the old.
So we're get to a point where we're consistent across the board with that, I think.
So I think I think there's general buy in or acceptance from from number one, the health department. Dan has no issue with this whatsoever. Remember, we had an issue with the previous corner. But the this new corner doesn't have an issue with this. So I think I think we're ready to go with this. These are about thirty five bucks a pair and we've got about thirty six vehicles that would need to be marked. So you're looking at about fourteen hundred dollars. Do you want the departments to pay for this or do you want it to come from one sole source?
I think it's a requirement since we're requiring it.
We've got, what, a line item for vehicle maintenance?
Yeah.
In the commissioners' budget.
I think we should pay for it.
Take it out of that.
Says for mandating it.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to go with this this color and this size.
Is that a local vendor that we're getting those from?
And it's it's not magnetic. It's a stick. It's a stick on D.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Individual orders.
Both Fleet and take home vehicles.
Yes.
Can you take individual orders like Commissioner Amerita?
That's up to you folks. Okay, so we're we're good to go with this.
Yes.
Beautiful. Looks like a pepperoni and black olive pizza.
Better late than never, I always say, right?
Better than the parking process, so you're improving.
Hey, the purchasing policy for seven years.
Faster than a purchasing policy.
Just look at the progress.
Yeah, you you're becoming a very speedy guy.
And that's all I have.
That's all you have? You and Beth are gonna have some.
Beth will and I'll chime in.
Okay, okay. Hi, Beth. Beth Fields, Community Coordinator, usually known as County Beth.
Country Beth. So this is on the downtown revitalization grant funded by ARPA money. It is a project that came out of the HELP Strategic Investment Plan. We've been working on this since January. We're to the point that in August, commissioners, you were given a list of those those applications that were funded scored the highest for your consideration to approve for funding. You approved fourteen of them. I think for this project, I'll just go ahead and give you the list that you approved. That might be the easiest thing to do.
Cool.
What are those orange markers?
Well, okay, I'll.
Good question, Mary Ann.
Nice segue. So Ron Cross has prepared paperwork. Number one, a MOU that we can enter into an agreement with the grantee that we can transfer, write checks to them to reimburse them for the grant. The amounts are listed. The other documents are deed restrictions. As part of the program, these folks have promised that for five years they'll keep the property in the downtown area as a retail for profit business. And there's some costs if they don't. The deed restriction does not need commissioners' approval. However, the MOU does. I have three copies of the MOU for each of the highlighted ones. That's the paperwork I have thus far. It needs to be signed by Commissioner President only. So that would be fifteen documents. That's really all I have to present on this unless you have questions or Ron, Steve. I guess at this point I would ask if the commissioners would be willing to authorize Jeff Plaster to sign three copies each of these five. I could leave them behind. Jeff, your thoughts?
Let me let me ask a couple of questions first. So so there are thirteen projects. There are five that you have documents for. Is that are there problems with the other ones or?
That was going to be my question.
Haven't gotten around to it yet or what's the?
So those documents went out last Monday and Tuesday. Those folks that have not reached out to me, I reached out to them earlier this week and said, hey, what's going on? Getting the proper people to sign. They have to be notarized. I'm a notary. I'm helping there.
We we met with each one of them. We met with the whole all of them individually as a group and made them aware of this process. And we were there that just as soon as they turned the grant that they can get their money. So I feel like that the delay is on their end and not ours.
Certainly. So and the there is one group of documentation. There there is one property that Ron has questions about LLC's ownership, who's going to sign the documents. And we're working closely with the agent for that applicant, which is a local person, to get everything in line. We had half our answers were received Friday. I followed up with him today and we're going to get the other half and Ron is aware.
So all fourteen properties, we have documents, just a matter of processing at this point.
It's a matter of them coming in here and either delivering them to me or getting the signer and me available that I can notarize it for them. So no, there's I I don't see a lot of problems or mishaps.
Should we approve all of them when they're when we have the signed copies back?
I think you're approving the offering of the participation as reflected by the MOU. And the deed restriction, I got a couple of issues. We can talk about that. But yeah, there is an obligation as set out in the MOU that they have to do. And that is one of the other things, sign a counterpart of the MOU.
Right. So so approval from the Board of Commissioners for the president to sign each of these when when they're ready and prepared and verified by the.
Because we've already approved the project.
Exactly.
It's just a matter. It's just a matter of authorizing Jeff to sign as they come in.
As they come in.
As they come in. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
As they satisfy, so we could give a blanket approval to all fourteen upon their satisfaction of the requirements of the MOU. And that's your motion, right?
Yes.
So we don't have to do this piecemeal.
Right, we don't have to do it next week.
To get it done. That certainly that is very efficient and I love that idea. Yes, efficient.
Government efficient? Wow, we are making progress.
I'll second that progress.
You made the motion and Mary Ann seconded.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. So in the interest of time, I will give these to you, Jeff, for your signature.
Not right now.
Oh, no, no, no. And I'll will also.
Get with you this afternoon.
Have a little chain of command going on. So and then after you sign, we'll have you auditor attest and.
I have to be commended too because I expected there would be issues and out of the fourteen that you've awarded, only three of them are really clean insofar as the person who was the entity, a personal entity that was the applicant for the participation also had an ownership interest in the property, which is big for the deed restriction. So we had to make sure that those those Lucien's got tracked down. She did a good job of that. As to the deed restriction, as I understood it at least, the idea was that we did not want, if you will, flippers coming in and being subsidized on property. So we required five year ownership retention. And in the deed restriction, there are certain exceptions that are permitted if there's a debt. Or you could, if I happen to own this property by myself and my accountant says, well, you really ought to put it in your an LLC, as long as you, as long as the equity ownership doesn't materially change. So so Beth said they had a couple of questions when they looked at the deed restriction. I list I list the restricted transfers, but I don't list what's permitted. Well, the the operating assumption would be if it's not restricted, it's permitted.
Right.
And I guess if they have a restricted transfer that they want to do anyhow, I think there's always a potential to come to the board.
Come back to us.
Feel the particular case. So that for sake of giving her some direction and not have to delay the deed restriction piece of it, I think that's what I would recommend.
Okay, that sounds appropriate to me. Anything else, Beth? Any other projects that you want to report on?
We're doing a couple of shifts, switches with the city. I noticed two properties. They took one that we had and apparently we're taking one that they had.
Yeah.
As the city, if you know, resolves, they have some major issues.
One of their staff members was here pulling deeds, so they're they're working on it. They're starting.
All right. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Steve, anything else?
No, it just sounds like I'm going to have to have my cookout this afternoon, aren't I?
Yes, sir. If you're burning wood.
Yeah.
If you have charcoal or propane, you're okay.
See, I have one of those solo stoves that's got a top on it. It deflects the sparks out. It just puts out heat.
Does it burn wood?
Although, you know what? It can burn pellets.
Wood pellets? Charcoal charcoal briquettes would be fine. Otherwise, put it away for the time being. All right. Mary Ann, do we have some claims?
Uh, yes, we do.
A lot? A lot? It's because we didn't have very many last week, I think.
Approval of local income tax distribution dated September 12th. Riverboat distribution dated September 12th. Centerpoint and Indiana American Water Claims dated September 13th. Jury Duty Claims dated September 17th. Regular Claims and Guardian Adline McCasa Claims dated September 18th today. Payroll dated September 20th. Dunflex and Garnishman's dated September 20th. Perf and Federal Taxes dated September 20th. And Mastercard Payments dated September 16th. Move for approval of all of these.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I will also defer to this meeting minutes from September 11th. It, I move for one correction. Due to technical difficulties, I was unable to connect on the Zoom call, so I would like to have the minutes amended to reflect that I did not attend. But I, since I did not attend, I will not move for acceptance.
All right. With that correction that Mary Ann was unable to attend. Motion to approve. I will second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Take a moment and sign a few things. Since you have signed those, Mary Ann, will you give us a brief report of your conference?
I will not multitask.
That's why I said you're gonna sign those.
National Association of Counties. Don't know why Wayne County was selected, but thank you, Jeff, for passing that invitation on to me about a nice cross-section of counties from very large, like Philadelphia, Detroit, about the smallest. There was another county about our size represented in a nationwide gathering of county officials to discuss opioid settlement distributions and the status of the opioid condition throughout America. The best news to come from this is that deaths fatalities from opioid use disorder is in decline. Some counties are experiencing over thirty percent decline in fatalities, but generally fifteen to twenty percent this year. Some counties are not as rapid in just, in reporting, some states are not as rapid in reporting, but the good news is fatalities from opioids, especially fentanyl, the number one killer today, has declined, and the general feeling is the number one reason for decline in opioids is, is the massive distribution of Narcan. Now, Loxone, medical description, being distributed without regard for perhaps some over use from the vending machines, for example, that the sheriff has, where maybe some abuse the supply. Better to have it abused and a few people taking more than their share just to have that life-saving drug in, in the field, on the street, rather than locked in some building. That's number one. Number two are the innovative methods in which these billions of dollars in opioid settlement collections have been distributed throughout the country. Even though it's been less than two years that it's been distributed, there are some extremely innovative ways that counties such as ours have utilized that. I will say that Wayne County's use of opioid settlement funds were received very well. Each county had an opportunity to present how we had distributed, and we, I have to say, the, the big guys were pretty impressed at how innovative we've been with distribution for programs as well as countywide distribution. They tend to focus on the big cities, the bigger the county, the more urban the distribution. But we were really more fairly distributed throughout our population. The one hit of the show, though, was Building Together. Every county seizes property from property owners failing to pay their property taxes, and they mostly demolish those, those structures, those homes. And so that was very well received. I think Building Together is going to spread throughout the country as a result of sharing this very simple, but great idea that everybody wins and nobody loses anything.
Jeff Holdhouse may become a rock star.
You, you just might, because it, it is, it is so obvious, but not really, because it just requires everyone giving up a little bit. I guess the losers, those that don't pay the property taxes, that's the only loser in the scheme of things. The, I suppose the most puzzling thing I, I took from that Seattle gathering was just why Indiana, the state of Indiana, does not share with local and local governments nearly as much as all the other states. Indiana's state government keeps fifty percent of the opioid settlement funds, whereas other states keep far less. I spent a lot of time with Guilford County Executive in North Carolina, whereas the local governments receive eighty-five percent of the opioid settlement, with the state only maintaining fifteen percent. Wow. Wayne County has received to date nine hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Imagine if we had another thirty-five percent of that, that, that could make a wonderful difference. But Indiana, I think, is tending and trending to be more state-centric in its governance and trying to be less local in its distribution of funding and that sort of thing, so...
Mary Ann, a question. Do we know, because the City of Richmond has gotten...
Oh, yeah.
Do we know where they've spent their money and, and what projects they've done? Do we know, have any idea?
They have not been, I mean, I, I will say, we have been, you know, quite, you know, open about our spending and our grantmanship and everything. All I know is they did spend a great deal on their social services program through the Fire Department. That is the one thing that they have announced that they have spent their money on, but otherwise, they have not been very forthcoming, and they have not been very...
Transparent?
Transparent is what I'm looking for regarding their grantship.
Well, that's why I was asking. I have not heard, I don't know, Jeff, if you'd have.
I have not. I, I was under the impression that some of that went to, to the Fire Department, perhaps the Police Department, but I don't know if that was restricted or unrestricted. We probably need to do a better job of asking, you know, how can we collaborate?
Well, that's why, that was my whole point, is that we've been getting some emails from some other interest parties and help us distribute this money. We need to...
We need to work with the city, because they, they have a significant amount of money.
Yeah, about eighty percent of what, seventy-five to eighty percent.
They have a large population that...
Correct.
That benefit from...
Absolutely.
Yeah, we've received nine hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, they've received about seven hundred thousand, and we, they, like we, were required to submit a report...
Right.
By September 6th, which we did, and I'm sure somebody, probably City Beth, probably had to submit that report, and that is retrievable by October 15th, when that will be available from the state of Indiana. I've just never gone back and looked at their last year's report, I should do that. But I do recommend that as we move toward the establishment of an advisory board, and I will say that most of the counties in Seattle did have an advisory board that led county governance into their decision-making process as to how to distribute opioid settlement funds. But I do think it would be wise to have one advisory board examining both county and city distributions, and maybe even taking a look at some of the thousands of dollars distributed to Hagerstown, Cambridge, and Centerville. They get a substantial amount, and as, over time, looking at the remaining years, decades of opioid settlement funds, too, that they could be helpful in combining an overall look at what will be coming to Wayne County. One, one of the more striking programs that is at work in Seattle, and we visited a number of treatment programs in Seattle while there, I, you know, I've walked more in Seattle, I think, than I ever went, and it's all uphill. Anyway, the Recovery High School, you believe that? There is a high school made up of, of drug-recovering kids, that's all they are. It's small, you know, there are only like thirty kids in the high school, but boy, is that effective. They, they really, all these kids, and there was a panel of students who said they would, all of them said they would be dead were it not for Recovery Academy. So we all know that mental health and addiction services for juveniles is underserved. If there's one thing I wish, you know, if there could be a wish list, that we could take some of these opioid settlement funds and focus on juveniles in the future, because while those that are dying are older, focusing on younger people to stop it before it gets out of control would be great. So we, we have not spent a lot of our money in that area.
Thank you for attending and continue these discussions as time goes by.
I just want to report one final thing. We have not yet distributed eighty-four thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars in funds that, it'd be kind of nice if we could get that out the door, it's not doing us any good in the middle of the bank, somebody else's name, anyway.
We got a, we got a new email that we'll be getting more in the, it was in excess of a hundred thousand this year, so...
Yeah, there's no predicting what we're gonna do. If we can't get that out the door, I don't know, but at least this money, twenty-three thousand, twenty-seven percent is unrestricted, sixty-one thousand is restricted, and I do think our, you know, one of the things we haven't been able to do for lack of money at the Health Department is fentanyl detection strips. That, that saves lives, that immediately saves lives.
All right. Thank you very much. Brad, anything else?
Are we gonna go over the holiday schedule? That was on the agenda.
We do have, that's at the bottom of the list here that I buried. Do you have, is that in our list of documents here?
It's in there, among the tree.
Yeah, my tree has lost a branch. At any rate, we're not planning on making a decision, you just wanted to distribute it.
Okay, we're, we're, just to look at it and...
Make sure we have it. Now I have it, okay. And this is proposed for twenty-five. Okay, so let's, let's review this and we'll, we'll adopt something in the next week or two.
If we meet...
If you have thoughts. Steve, anything else? Bobby?
Yes.
We got the shared history.
The city's to list their contracts for their portion of the edit funds.
Oh, okay.
Has been signed by the mayor, and then it'll be signed by Council and Commissioners.
Val thought that had been referred to the Finance Committee, I forgot that you had it over there, so, anyway, we'll let her know.
This is just signed by Jeff, right?
Yeah, there we go.
All right.
Shall we discuss the holiday schedule? Because if we don't meet till the middle of October...
Do you have suggestions?
I'd really like to suggest the holidays, eliminating Columbus Day.
I think that's the suggestion at the bottom.
I don't see any reason to hold up on it.
We have thirteen days currently, so the only, only thing we're eliminating is Columbus Day and adding...
Christmas Eve, anytime Christmas is in the middle of the week, it's kind of problematic.
Is that what we're...
Wednesday and Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay. As opposed to Tuesday and Wednesday?
I think a lot of people will take Friday, the 26th, off.
You're not gonna be able to get a lot done on the 26th.
But I think we should...
I'm okay, I mean, if we, if we didn't necessarily need to make a decision, I'm okay with proposed. I mean, I don't see anything, Columbus Day, that's, if we eliminate that, it still keeps us at thirteen days.
I'm good with that.
Well, I don't see any reason not to make the decision. Yeah, I move that we have thirteen paid holidays in 2025, with Columbus Day being deleted from the holiday schedule.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Bobby, you can put that out to people.
It just gives families some more planning time.
Anything else?
Also, we need to decide whether we're going to meet the next two Wednesdays.
So, you guys wanna go ahead and meet, I'll be at the AIC convention.
I am okay to meet next Wednesday unless, I mean, at least we can do claims and we don't have to do anything real pressing, but, I mean...
And you may need to do something with the, the burn ban, either extend it or...
Yeah, I'm okay, you know, who knows what the weather's gonna be? It's easier to cancel than it is to reconstruct.
All right, let's go ahead and, and you'll meet next week, and then we'll meet, we'll continue to meet on the second, is it the second or the third? What's our meeting?
The first Wednesday.
Next, October. Second, okay.
But we'll meet the first Wednesday of October, too?
Yes.
Okay, so...
I'll, I'll be out then, but you guys...
You'll be out, so it'll just be two of us, the next two meetings of...
Yep. Anything else to come before Commissioners today?
Nothing that has to do with county business, but today is the United States Air Force's birthday, so since I'm a veteran of the Air Force, I'd like to wish the United States Air Force happy birthday, seventy-seven years.
Happy birthday, Air Force.
I'm gonna feed that to Chris, I'm sure he'd appreciate it.
You mean, he's not planning a celebration?
I don't know, maybe if he's not there, I'll know why.
Maybe he'll bring cake. All right, if that's, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.